Okay. So this is a workshop, so I guess we don't really need to convene any of the meetings, any formal meetings since it's a workshop between the with the select board and the budget committee to start the budget review. I don't think we need to go through introductions because everybody's names are on your screens, which is good. We've got the infamous budget document, which will be shared once we get into the budget so that we have it on the screen. So those at home can also see or those that are watching the live stream can also see what we're looking at or what we're talking about as well.
So Mark is known as iPad, so maybe.
Yeah.
Mark Kelly.
Yep. Yes. So Mark Kelly is known as iPad on the screen. But I think everybody else is has their names up, which is great. Just to go over some ground rules with Zoom, we do have, obviously, we have the wonderful Hollywood Squares version here that we're playing tonight. So if you have a comment or a question, if you can just raise your hand and be recognized instead of just jumping in. So we don't all talk over each other. That would be greatly appreciated. And so I'm just going to kick off and give a quick overview and introduction of the budget for fiscal year ending 2022, which is amazing that we're already thinking of 2022. When I was crafting this budget, I essentially had asked the department heads to give me their budget numbers as if it's a normal year again. Obviously, we're still in the throes of this pandemic, although there does seem to be light at the end of the tunnel, which is a good thing. But I wanted to basically see what a normal year would look like. I also, one of the things that I included in this budget that certainly will be, I'm sure, discussed at length. All of the items that were included in the capital improvement plan, I've also included in the budget so that we can have the discussion around those topics. And so you'll you'll see those in a number of different departmental budgets with different lines, whether they're deposits to reserve accounts or whether they're actually items that we're budgeting to undertake that project for in the next fiscal year. And we'll look at those on each in each department as we go through. So overall, this municipal expenditures show an increase of about $700,000 over the current year, which is a huge number. I understand that. Revenue does show an increase also of about $415,000. So we have a net increase in the budget of approximately $285,000. I will say that under the revenue side, that $415,000 increase also includes a $300,000 use of undesigned fund balance or unassigned fund balance, as we're supposed to call it now. And we're only using $15,000 in the current year. The reason for that is that department heads did an exceptionally fine job through last June, when the pandemic started in March, we essentially froze spending on across the board, except for essential spending. And we actually realized some revenues above and beyond what we expected. So I give them a huge amount of credit for that. So we did come in an unaudited addition to our unassigned fund balance of approximately $380,000 as of last June. So that's one of the reasons that I'm suggesting that we can use $300,000 from unassigned fund balance to help offset taxes in this budget. Of course, that number can be discussed and debated as we as we go through the process of the budget review over the next several weeks. In the in the expense side of things, the number of the the increase of $700,000 includes many different things, but I just wanted to touch on a few highlights before we get into this. It includes the first principal and interest payment for the infrastructure bond that was approved back in 2019. And that's about $178,000. We did a 10-year bond for that. We didn't want to go any longer than that simply because it's mostly made up of road projects and certainly they don't they don't last. They don't even generally last 10 years, but we didn't feel like we wanted to borrow into the future against projects that probably are already past their useful life. It also includes, and you'll notice, $250,000 increase in road construction and paving. And I know this has been one of the topics of conversation over the last several years, and it certainly was with with us last year. So there's a $450,000 number in the public works budget for road construction and paving. This is certainly not the and we'll talk a little bit more about this later because we do have public works on the budget on the schedule tonight. The, as you probably are aware, the what we should be investing on an annual basis is about $790,000 in road construction and paving. But to be realistic, we have to look at what we can actually accomplish for for the the construction season in in order for public works to get the road projects ready for paving and the like. We just have to be realistic with that. So the number that I've placed in the budget is a realistic number of what we can do for projects. And again, we'll get into that in more detail. It also, the budget also includes an additional, it's $20,000 in the administration budget for a broadband initiative, which you've probably been reading about in the newspapers or online. There's also $10,000 included for EMS regionalization study to continue our work with our EMS project. I'm requesting another $8,200 in the planning and development budget to have a third day for our planner services. And we'll certainly talk about that once we get to that budget later on in the in the schedule. I mentioned the various reserve accounts that we have budgeted for, including reserve deposits as well as projects. In the West Rockport Fire Station budget, you'll notice a $40,000 figure for engineering and design work, and that's to continue with the design and engineering work for the replacement of that fire station. Also in public works, you'll also find $25,000 for the replacement of a boiler. This is one of those capital projects that is budgeted and would need to be done in the next capital year. And also within public works, there's $43,000 for pathways reserve. Part of that $33,000 of it is for the Route One sidewalk from approximately Maritime Farms into Camden to Corey Hill Road. That's our remaining share for that project to actually be constructed. Hopefully, this this construction season is when it's scheduled. And then 10,000 of that 43,000 is for is was requested requested by the pathways committee as a grant match to a potential grant with MDOT for a comprehensive pathways study, pathway sidewalk study in the community, including Route 90. So as you can imagine, the budget is over the LD1 limit. When I first became your town manager back in August of 2019, we had a meeting, I think it was in September or October of that year, and I expressed my philosophy about LD1 and the fact that it's as far as I'm concerned, it's past its time. But I think that the way that I approach budgeting is I look at what we need and then put that forward, and then we have the discussion and go. The cap, the LD1 cap is we're we're at about $288,000 over what the cap calls for. Part of the problem here is that we are anticipating receiving extra revenue sharing than what was collected in the previous year. And that counts against us when it comes to figuring the cap. So we have to deduct that from what the cap amount is because we're getting extra state funding, which I've never agreed with, but I won't talk about the my philosophies on that tonight. So that that does reduce our cap somewhat when it comes to LD1. So with that, I think we will jump right into the budget review unless there are any questions about the the general overview. Mark, you got a question?
Yeah, let me get off mute. Page eight, you were talking about the that's your financial status. Paragraph two, you said the count, the town currently has 18% or 65 days worth of expenses. And the next one, you say after using the 300,000, we still have 18%. So how much will that 300,000 lower us?
The 300,000 would get us to the 18%.
So we're I we're above 18% now, and it will lower us.
Yes.
To 18%, all right.
Yeah, and I and I should say too that there are some errors within the budget document itself that that we've found since printing it. The pandemic has has done has slowed progress and work for us in in number of ways. Part of that is that we're currently working split shifts, and we have been over the last couple of months. And so that we did find some errors. It's hard to communicate with staff when we're working different shifts. So the LD1 calculation is not accurate in the budget binder. I was looking at that earlier tonight. So we will correct, excuse me, we will correct that. And the county tax number also was incorrect in the budget binder, so we'll correct that tonight when we're discussing the county, the county assessment. So the numbers that I've that I've put out there and some of the information that's included even in my letter changed as we were modifying the budget even after my letter was written. So keep that in mind, please, and I do apologize for that. Any other questions or comments before we dig in? Okay. So let me, Megan, if you can.
Well, Bob Duke has a comment.
Sorry, Bob.
No, just a just a comment. I'm I haven't been on the Budget Committee in Rockport for probably 25 years, so the numbers were astounding. I serve on the County Budget Committee and have for a number of years. My comment is that Rockport appears to have a very ambitious budget this year, and I don't, you know, I don't, we don't need to get into a debate. I just want to go on records to say that LD1 is there for a reason, whether you agree with it or not, and it would appear to me that our goal really should be to meet that cap and not exceed it. That's just a comment on my end.
Okay, any anybody else with any comments or questions? And yell at me if you see somebody with a hand up and I don't recognize them. Those of you that run these meetings before with a lot of people in them, you know how difficult it is. Okay. Megan, if you could put up the budget document and go to the parks page. And if you can make it larger, that would be great. Okay. So for those of you that are new to the Budget Committee and those just as a refresher to the what I usually do when I'm presenting these budgets is that I'll go through and I will discuss where there are changes or major changes from one year to the next, whether that's an increase or a decrease. And then I'll kind of open it up to questions from there. In the cases of this one, we also have Nani Wallace here in the meeting as well. So I'll go through the budget, highlight some things, and then she certainly can add some comments too as well from her perspective as chair of the Parks and Beautification Committee. And I, again, I won't touch on every line, but it certainly if you have a question about a line, then we, you know, bring that up and we can and we can go from there. So the parks budget is excuse me, the expenditures budget for the parks is down $18,465, a little less than 20%. Excuse me.
If you could mention what cage that's on.
I'm sorry, yes. Page 226. I'll give you a chance to get there so you can. Thanks for reminding me, Joe. Okay, so within the parks budget, the first line I'll discuss is line 3627, which is lime kiln's maintenance. And if you see on your screen, Megan has highlighted that as well. So for the current budget year, we have nothing budgeted, and we put $10,000 in there for FY22. And the reason for that is so that we can do some maintenance on on one of the lime kilns that's needed. It needs to have basically pressure washing, reshingle the roof that's there and staining the woodwork around the on the roof structure itself. And this includes renting a lift. Helen, did you have a question?
Yes. How have you checked and seen how safe pressure washing is going to be given the granular nature, the softness of the mortar in there?
The pressure washing, Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, but that would be for the the wood structure, correct?
The actual structure, not not the actual kiln itself.
Right.
For the structure around the kiln.
Okay, thank you.
Line 5310, which is agricultural and botanical. So there's an increase of $1,200 there. Essentially, that was a request from the Parks and Beautifications Committee to include additional plantings and mulch at the Memorial Park to kind of finish off that park, if you will. Line 5380 signs, there is $2,500 in there. The reason I'm discussing that is because I had a late request from Parks and Beautification last Friday when the budgets were printing to not have that for signs, but instead to have that for a purchase of a bench that I believe could also go into Memorial Park. Nani, do you want to touch base on that?
I do. Actually, it's more than one bench. It might be two or three benches. So the the general consensus of the committee was that originally we really did want to put the signs at the south and north ends of Route One, the Welcome to Rockport signs. But in as much as we're really trying to push the sort of buttoning up of Memorial Park that we've done a lot of work and it's it's ready for people to use, but we don't have any benches there for them to sit on except for one. We thought it might be a good idea to reappropriate that money to some benches so that people could actually just start enjoying Memorial Park in its final state, especially given the fact that people are anxious to get outdoors, and we've done so much planting there, and the park is really ready for use. So people like me who are over 60 really want to get in there and just kind of sit and enjoy the view. So that's why we're asking for a reappropriation, and we put the we'd put the money into the signs next year if that was possible.
Yeah, and I don't have any problem listing that. I think what we'll do under under probably supplies, we'll probably add another line there for park benches. There is a line under the capital section for park benches, but
Those are more expensive.
Yeah, so well, plus they're they're really not cap capital items per se. They don't really meet the definition of that. So I'd rather have it under supplies. So I think what we'll do is add a add another line, and we'll just shift that out of signs and put it into park benches and and add a separate line for that.
That would be great, and we would hope that by next year that the, you know, the the legacy benches will have taken off a little bit more, and we'll start to get things replaced by those, but you know, we've we've had a few purchased, but it's not I attribute some of that to COVID, that people just aren't wanting to do anything.
Yes. Mark, was that a hand?
Yes, please. I'll try to get it more in the way. Is 3627, Bill, the one that you and I talked about, the maintenance, Doug brought it up, and you and I talked about it. I I thought the number you said was going to be lower than the 10,000 that is presented there. The 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 number that comes to mind is somewhere in the high 4,000, I thought, but I'm not terribly good at numbers at times.
I'm not sure if you're thinking of the doing the roof on the other one, but this this one is going to be for repairing the large lime kiln structure beside the launch ramp. That number I've never known to change and differ from that amount.
Yeah, and I will say that there might have been some confusion because the $4,000 number that was budgeted in the not this year, but the year before, that was moved into a reserve account, and that was to build a roof structure over the the one that doesn't have a a roof structure on it. So that we were talking about both of those.
So what I'm hearing is that that money that didn't get used last year was moved into a reserve, and that will be done this coming year?
That would be the plan, although we're talking with Legacy Rockport about other things too. So Denise, I don't know if I saw you had your hand up.
Yeah, I just thought I'd jump in on that because we are having an evaluation done of those kilns, and we've got a you know, someone from the Stonemasons Guild who's evaluating that. We've spent money with Gartley and Dorsky to have survey work done to see how stable those kilns are. The good news is they are very stable. They haven't moved since the last survey work was done over 10 years ago. But a roof on the one kiln is is probably the most obvious thing that would further the stabilization. And I thought the 4,000 appears here as if it was actually spent. Or is it just actual because it went into a reserve account at that?
It was actually, yeah, it was actual because it went into a reserve account.
Okay, okay, because I saw that, and I thought, well, I don't think we spent any money on the lime kilns for a while.
Helen.
There. As I've asked in the past, is Legacy Rockport going to be applying for a grant? Because I've given them information on historic grants the last two years. Grants can be for up to 10,000 a year.
Helen, can I ask you what those grants are for?
They're historic preservation grants issued by the Daughters of the American Revolution.
So they would have to be. So I, one of the things that I'm hoping that our Parks and Beautification Committee can do is to work with Legacy Rockport to replace and increase the signs around town for the, you know, the historical markers. You know how they have in Thomasville, the what's it called, the History and Streets? Or I think that's something what's called, and we apparently Rockport opted for a cheaper option several years ago, and those signs are now faded, and some of them are not even legible anymore. So I plan to meet with Legacy Rockport about pursuing, perhaps doing History in the Streets, and I'm wondering, would any of those grants be for that or no?
Not as I understand it. It's more for physical things.
All right, thank you.
Helen, I think just quickly, the the holdup on that not really holdup, but we're still waiting. We're waiting on the final Stonemasons report and analysis of what needs to be done before we know what we would be applying for a grant for.
Okay, well, once you know, if you want to apply for the DAR grants, you can talk to me about, because my chapter would sponsor that for you.
Thank you.
Nice.
Any any other discussion around the lime kilns line? Okay. Also moving down the budget in the in capital items, the Walker Park Reserve Deposit. So this also came from the Parks and Beautification Committee. They're looking to add some additional playground equipment, I believe. And so we're adding $12,000 in there for for that.
Did you want me to address that? So we have a we have a five-year plan that we've set up for the Parks and Beautification Committee, like a rolling living document. And so we're hoping that in five years, we'll be able to replace the equipment at Walker Park. And so we're starting to budget for it because most of the equipment is dated and not ADA compliant. And Eric Winters, who's on our committee, is certified in park certification and all the things that we need to do. So we've been, he's been very helpful in what we're doing, and so we're hoping to budget enough each year so that four or five years down the line, we'll be ready to replace the equipment.
Mark?
I, you know, I gotta chime in. I mean, I, you know, I find it what's going to happen is I found it with my experience on the the Budget Committee and the board is that we'll take this, we'll take this $75,000 budget for the culture and recreation parks, and we'll pick it to death. But by the time we get to the million three for the highway, we're going to be tired of asking questions. I, you know, to me, I would have much rather, as we've mentioned in the past, start at the front of the book and work our way through it instead of, you know, have to answer Jeff's questions about what age it is. That's the other part of it, but you know, I, I mean, it's going to be a difficult year. No question. I agree with Bob. But and there's things in here that that I could see that, you know, if we, you know, we had $4,800. Well, why didn't it get used in last year? Or the year before, I think, or whatever year it was put into the reserve. We are asking for another 10 to do the other one. Well, that's why I asked if it was going to be done. You know, if it wasn't, then, you know, I I'm just trying to say that, you know, I would rather start with the bigger ones and and pick the hell out of them and then and then come back to the smaller ones. And if you've got anything left over, then you don't have to be so picky about the smaller ones. There, I'll get back on mute.
I like your thought process, Mark. If I could just add something on behalf of the Parks Committee, I feel like we don't ask for much because our committee members like to roll up their sleeves and get in and get down and get dirty and and do a lot of the work and ask for donations and you know, we completed Memorial Park with basically no town money. The restoration of Memorial Park, and we had, you know, a day where we had a work committee where we went out there and worked, and Anna Remsen, well, we had, we actually, we did have some town money because we paid Anna Remsen from Seasons Down East for soil and compost, but we really get out and do as much as we can without costing any taxpayer dollars. And so I I appreciate your comments, Mark, because we're hoping that you will preserve what what little amount we've got in the budget to do the things we're hoping to do for this year. Thank you.
Any other questions about the parks budget before we move on to the next one? I'm sorry, it does take me a while to go through and just to make sure I'm not missing anybody. So we'll go on to the next one on the list is Recreation, and that's page 240.
Thank you for having me. I'm going to check out.
Thanks.
All right, take care.
Thanks.
Thanks, Denise.
Okay, so the Recreation Budget. The expenses are show a decrease of $6,700 and change, which is about 10%. Couple of things to highlight here. Line 3630 under the mowing contract. Last year, if you recall, we had budgeted for the town purchasing a mower that we could undertake some of the mowing ourselves. We could help. We should cut some of the expenses for mowing. So that shows a decrease here. We we have budgeted in that line. Those contracts are up at the end of June, so we have budgeted for an increase when those contracts go out to bid later on this spring. But we will remove RES from that contract. Down under capital items, you'll notice that line 7306, that's the that was the equipment purchase. That was the mower purchase. So that's been accomplished. So that's taken out of the budget. And then there is in the next line, 7560, there is a $15,000 deposit into the rec reserve account, which there was a request for 31,000. I reduced it down to 15. The 31,000 basically is for beginning a reserve account for the fence replacement at Marge Jones Field. Eventually, all those fences will need to be replaced. It's a very costly item that will have to be done. And so the thought was, from the department head's perspective, was to put $20,000 in per year to be able to accomplish that. I've reduced that down to 10,000. And then also the tennis courts will need to be redone as well, which is somewhat costly as well. So doesn't have to be done now, but it's again, one of these, these, these are one of the items that I had mentioned that are in for capital improvements that I've put in there anyway. So I did reduce that down to 5,000 for the tennis court replacement, as both of these aren't immediate. I would like to have some funding in the fence account simply because I would like to have some funding in the fence account simply because depending on the the freeze thaw cycle, there are repairs that need to be made or fences that need to be replaced. So if we have some funding in there, in that reserve account, and before we get to a full replacement, we can, we can piecemeal the work, which is not always the best way to do it, but at least we would be able to have some funding in place for that. Questions, comments? I don't see any.
Bill?
Yep, Bob.
Well, this may be more of a general comment. We're we're well aware of the road reconstruction budget needs. We're well aware of this year one of 178,000 in this capital improvements program that the town voted on. This seems like a year that there are, you're inserting a number of capital items, whether they're reserve or whether they're next year expenditures, that frankly are inflating the increase for this year that we're thinking about. I mean, as an example, and I'm using county as an example, a number of years ago, we had to completely change our heating cooling HVAC system in the county courthouse. It was huge money. And that first year, that first year payment was, I mean, it was quarter of a million dollars or something like that. We agreed that any other capital items would not be initiated in the in the year of that first year payment because it's basically you're creating a balloon of an increase where if these capital items were considered for a future year, the increase wouldn't be so significant. Do you know what I'm talking, you know what I'm saying? I mean, you guys, you've been at this long enough, Bill. It just seems to me that all these other capital items, which I know are all valuable, I understand that. It's it's part of that that is, you know, kind of busting the budget in my mind. So you can either comment on it or you can move on.
Yeah, no, I'll I'll comment on that. As I said in the introduction, what I, what I've done with the capital items basically is I've taken what the Capital Improvement Committee had ranked and recommended to be funded in this year and put them in the budget. I mean, that's essentially what I've done. So, you know, they certainly can be points of discussion once, once the Budget Committee and the Select Board get to that point. And I don't disagree with you. I I think that that's what we have to look at, is that we have to look at these capital items and and have discussions and and look at those and see what what we can put off, what we can delay. You know, just with a caveat in mind that we don't want to get into the point where we're having to take out infrastructure bonds to take care of our capital needs in the future years. But certainly with the infrastructure bond payment that's due this year for the first time, your point is well made. You know, it is, it is a big number at this point. So can we delay some of these? Yeah, I think we probably can. But I wanted to show them because that's what the Capital Improvement Committee had had recommended. There are other questions, comments? Okay. So then next up on the list is the Public Works Budget, which is on page 200. One of the other comments I should have made in my introduction is that we did negotiate two Public Works comments over the last calendar year, including Public Works, the other was the Police Department. So you do see some increases above and beyond a 2% cost of living allowance in the Public Works employee line. That also shows up under the cell phone stipend line 2575. That was one of the negotiated benefits as well. That essentially, we we provide a stipend for those that we, that use their personal cell phones instead of having the town purchase cell phones for use and pay for them. So that shows the increase also in the in the cell phone stipend line. And of course, the benefits line is always adjusted. One, one other note, the unemployment compensation across the board where we have wages. You'll notice that the unemployment compensation amount has increased. It's not an overall big number, but the increased percentage is fairly large in some of these. This one's 20, 27%. And that's because our our rates have increased for unemployment compensation. Under Purchased and Contractual Services line 3006, this is a new item. Professional cleaning service, and this is one of the items that really has come out of the pandemic. So we do have a professional cleaner that comes into Public Works now, which we didn't have before. We started this in the current fiscal year because of the pandemic. And it certainly is a valuable thing. It is, it is fairly expensive. But we keep, to keep everybody safe, we think it's important at this point.
Bill?
Yes.
Is that something that once we're sort of back to normal, if we ever get there, that would go away?
I don't think it'll go away completely. Most all the buildings have hired outside cleaners to come in and do cleaning. You know, on an occasional basis, I think it would be reduced because we wouldn't have to do it as frequently. And and the the items that are being done, for instance, you know, I'll give you an appropriate example in the municipal building. So we have our our cleaning service come in on a daily basis before we're there and sanitizing basically every high-touch surface, from doorknobs, door handles, desktops, light switches, you know, you name it, and doing that type of of work. So if we get back to some sort of normalcy, I think that these numbers can be reduced because of, you know, we won't be doing it on a on a daily basis for that. It certainly has helped keeping down the the general flu cases because because everything is sanitized all the time. And then, of course, staff are sanitizing all the time as well. But yeah, we can reduce those, I think, going forward. But for some reason, there was never a professional cleaning service for the Public Works Department, and it really is needed to keep it, to keep it clean for the employees.
Hey, Bill, it's Michelle.
Yes.
Can you speak to the security alarm monitoring? It just look, it looks like it's the same as last year, but it looks like we don't spend that much. So I was just wondering what that was.
Which line are we on?
I'm sorry, it's a 4115.
Okay, sorry. I'm gonna have to defer to Megan on that. Megan, do you know what the monthly cost is for the security alarm monitoring there, why we haven't spent?
I'm gonna have to look up what the monthly cost is. I think Mike was gonna have some work done to the fire pole stations and stuff like that.
We did all that.
Yeah.
That's all been done, new box, all new smoke detectors.
Yeah, I'll have Megan look into that, Michelle. Yep, thank you. Going back up to 3440 rent of equipment. I want to make a note here that the note that was in the supporting information for this was incorrect. It said that there was a decrease for rental equipment for the library intersection that was added last year. That's not, that's not accurate. There was an increase in the, in the amount of money in this line for other rental of equipment, for other projects, and not for the library intersection. So we're decreasing that back down based on what we expect to be able to do for road work, the equipment that we have. We always rent a different size excavator anyway, depending on what we're doing for road work. But this will be be decreased from 11,000 down to 10,000 down to 4,000. 3646 sidewalk, summer and winter maintenance. A big chunk of this is the winter maintenance contract for snow removal on the sidewalks, which is the 23,000. We've, we've put another $12,000 in there for sidewalk repair, which would be on Russell Avenue as well as some of the other areas of concrete sidewalk where we have to replace some some panels that have deteriorated, which is why we have that number built in there. On the next page 201, line 5340 and line 5415, we've combined those lines into one, or essentially taking the general maintenance supplies and put it into general supplies. They haven't changed the budgeted amounts, but if you look through, that's why there's a zero number in the general maintenance supply line. It makes sense to have two different lines, basically that cover the same, same type of thing. And then under Oil, Grease and Filters, line 5810, there's a $1,700 reduction there. It's a 45%, so it's a large percentage. Essentially, the, every other year is when we'll do bulk purchasing for oils, and then it'll last us. So that's why that's reduced, because we've done it this past year. The big items in the Public Works Budget, of course, are under the Capital Items. So if you look at line 7205, the Building Improvements Line, as I mentioned in the introduction, the $25,000 number is to replace the boiler in the Public Works Garage. And we did make some repairs this past year to get us through so we could actually replace it. And our company that does the work for us has said, we really need to replace that boiler. We need to do it fairly soon, otherwise we'll be doing it on an emergency basis. The lease purchase payments, 7260. And just so that you follow through underneath that, the grade outline numbers, that's what's included in that 162,802 number. So those all add up to that number. And so the replacement plan for the Public Works Trucks, which you have in your, in your document as backup material, we're replacing two vehicles this next, this next year. And then, as I mentioned in the introduction, line 7525, the Pathways Reserve Deposit for $43,000. Yep, sorry, Helen, go ahead. Okay, so 40 in the $43,000, the Pathways representatives had asked for 25,000 for a grant match for an M D O T grant. Said they they would accept 10,000, so I put $10,000 in there. And then there's $33,000 for the completion of the Route 1 sidewalk in conjunction with Camden. So that's what's included in that 43. Helen?
The, according to Audra from Memo, I believe it was from last 2018, Rockport's portion was then, of the contract was listed at $51,594. And at that point, we had, as of fiscal year 19-20, we had $48,500 in the reserve. We didn't put anything in last year because we felt it was close enough and COVID and everything. Now, I understand from your comment that we have spent $26,909 out of the reserve for engineering studies and so on, leaving 17,280. With the 33,000, part of that 43, that only comes to 50,280 for our 51,549 obligation on the sidewalk. And I'm wondering, the numbers don't quite add up. Am I missing something? Because it looks like there's a, spending the 26,000 from the 48 should have left somewhere around 31,000. Am I missing something somewhere?
Megan?
Our, the bids came in a lot higher when they finally sent them out. And our total obligation, according to M D O T, is almost 77,000. We have paid Camden that 26909 already, which leaves us that balance of the 50,000.
Okay. That's what I was wondering, so. Yeah, the numbers, and I understand the, the project is on the D O T calendar for this year, but I don't think the actual bid proposals have gone out.
I don't, I don't believe they have either.
But soon, is what I understood. I I guess I'm asking if is the 33 is going to be enough?
I, I, at this point, I hope so.
Yeah, we probably won't know in time to do anything about it if if the bids come in.
That's right. And and if there, you know, if there's a difference, if they're higher, then, you know, all we can do is probably use some money from the road construction line, you know, if if we have it. Hopefully, it's only a thousand or $2 if it is any difference, because our share is certainly a lot smaller than Camden's share when it comes to that.
Yeah, well, the latest numbers I've seen for that project from D O T are over a million.
Yeah, it's a million, $10,000.
Yeah, over in the past 10, 10 years or so, that that's been proposed, it's quadrupled, more than quadrupled.
The question Helen asked could be answered by taking that out of 3646, which you already said was for sidewalk maintenance. So that probably would cover it.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Yeah, no, go ahead, Mark.
No, I was gonna say, and the other thing I I find curious, I'm just following up on Michelle's alarm question. You know, and I don't mean to be snarky, but if anything, if everything had been upgraded last year and we have a department head that doesn't know what the 3350 was requested for, that's what I'm wondering. And I know you're gonna get back to us, but if you look at the preceding year's numbers, they're all pretty even, within $50 of one another, maybe or 60. Is the billing up to date? I mean, that was one of my other questions of Megan. That was always, we were late getting things from Camden, like for fuel. When, when is this budget, is this for January 1st or?
It's as of December 31st, but most utilities are billed a month behind.
Okay, so some of these numbers for utilities don't reflect what the actual expense is.
Right.
Right, okay. And I'm not sure if, is is CECO Security on a month or a quarterly basis, Megan?
Quarterly.
Yeah, so that. Okay, so the expended amount might be lower than what we actually, what it actually is, depending on when that bill came in. If it's a quarterly bill and it came in, you know, after we paid the bills the end of December, then it's not gonna be reflected there. So going on, the the next big item, well, a couple of items, I guess, the Equipment Reserve Line 7545. So we currently have about $4,000 in that line. The department head would like to get that built up to around, sorry. There's a fire call going on. So the department head would like to get that reserve account built up to about $40,000. And the reason for that is that we don't have any money budgeted if we should lose, say, an engine in a truck or transmission in a truck or something like that. I think we can do it a little bit slower, and that's why I put the $10,000 in there. And then the next line down from that, the 7605, is the road construction and paving line, which, again, I put $450,000 in there. This is one of the lines during last, last spring, after we had agreed and settled on the budget between the Budget Committee and the Select Board that we revisited, and we did reduce that. Originally, it was budgeted at $300,000 for this year. And we felt that we could take a $100,000 cut there in the budget because of the infrastructure bond and the work that we were undertaking with that during this this past construction season. But with the thought that we, is that we would make up a little bit for that. Again, when I said in my introduction that we have a list of roads that we feel that we can get accomplished during this next construction season, that essentially takes Get accomplished during this next construction season, that essentially takes up that four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And those roads and Mike might have to. Might have to help me here because I'm looking for my list and. I really don't like working at home and doing these meetings, but we're we're looking at. Finishing Lime Rock Street from where the construction ended for the library intersection, finishing that. Up around and also Hughes Street as well. Both of those roads need. Substantial work, including some drainage, mostly on Lime Rock, although there's ledge there. So that's gonna be difficult, but they do need to be. Be done. Those are on the priority list for those two. Then we've also talked about mechanic street. Including the sidewalk, and that's a big ticket item. The estimate we have for mechanic street, including doing the sidewalk, redoing the sidewalk, I should say, is about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Then we also would have work done for Spear Street, Grove Street, Amesbury. Mike, off the top of your head, do I hit those all?
You you've hit those and we're gonna finish up this year's. Elm Street, we're gonna resurface out of this year. So yes, you've hit them all.
Yes, so that's. The other topic is that within this year's budget, we'll be doing Elm and C Street, putting on an overlay coat on those. We were able to, on seeing Elm Street, for those of you that may have noticed or lived near that, those two streets. Main Water had upgraded the water line last fall and. Been nice if they had told us ahead of time so we could actually plan on this type of stuff, working with them. But so we basically punted and worked in a great an arrangement with. Their contractor in Main Water where. They essentially put the binder coat down. They reclaimed the road, put a binder coat down. And it cost the town about, I want to say sixteen thousand dollars, Mike.
Yes.
Yeah, which. Those two streets were on our list anyway to be done, probably next this coming year. So they kind of got bumped up the list just because of the construction project that was happening. As you know, when they. When they put that, I put a water line and they basically destroyed those two streets anyway. So. It would have been costly for them to just patch that and it wouldn't have ended up with a decent street. We would have to come back in and. Redone it as well. So. Actually worked out pretty well for us. But those we will put putting an overlay out of this year's what's left in our construction line for this for this spring. So questions? Denise.
Um, so I just understanding where the where the money comes from or what we're paying for. I know with the infrastructure bond. There was a lot of DPW staff time. Workers' time to get things ready for these projects. Is that just showing up in payroll, but it's not really under road construction? So then, what are the road construction costs? Are those out of pocket? What we're paying other contractors?
It's it's a combination of paying other contractors. Should we have, you know, should we hire contractors to come in? It's also some engineering work that may have to be done. Especially if you're looking at mechanic street, there would be engineering work done there. It's also materials. So if there are culverts that need to be replaced, catch spaces that need to be replaced. If there are pieces of granite curb that can't be reused, for instance, on on mechanic street. Need to be replaced, we'd have to purchase that. Gravel, fill, you know, that type of materials that would have to buy and then eventually paying a contractor to lay the pavement. So. For instance, on mechanic street or on most streets, if you're going to, you're gonna completely remove the pavement. Then you're gonna replace it with two inches of binder. And then anywhere from, depending on the street, anywhere from three quarters an inch to an inch and inch and a half of what's called overlay. Which is kind of the wear surface on top of the binder. So all of those types of things go into that road construction line. The forced labor account is the is a public work, so we're paying for them and their labor anyway. Whether they're cutting brush or whether they're replacing culverts or working on a street.
Thank you.
I don't know if Helen or Bob was first.
Go ahead, Helen.
Mechanic Street, you mentioned the sidewalk. Is that going to be brought up to be ADA compliant because right now it's too narrow?
Yes.
That'll narrow the road to some extent, I would assume.
Yeah, there are some places, yeah, there are some places, as you know, that it's that the sidewalk is. Directly abutting the street and other areas where there's a little bit of an esplanade in between the street and the sidewalk. So. Yes, that would be brought up to ADA standards. Anytime we're going to be rebuilding a sidewalk or or replacing a sidewalk or building a sidewalk. Then we have to bring it up to ADA standards.
Okay, thank you.
Bob. Just a comment nineteen eighty six, when I first served as a select board member. Our budget for road reconstruction was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I just find it hilarious when I look back at the last few years. That's about what we've been spending in inflation. Mike and I had this brief conversation about this, how irresponsible. I'll say past select boards have been not to properly fund. Road reconstruction and having the town vote to have a have to have an infrastructure bond. To bring us up to speed, but it doesn't sound like that. Bond really brought us up to where we need to be. Am I right?
Yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, Bob, you're exactly right. That's why we did the bond the way we did it. And we set that bond up at a level. That we thought could be tolerated after just approving a library bond of a similar size. But it didn't bring bring it up. Megan has done the work. Megan and Mike have done the work. To really get the roads properly maintain the many miles that we have, it's over a million bucks a year.
Yep. Thank you.
Bill, I just.
Yep, Denise.
Wanted to add one more thing on the mechanic street sidewalk. I've already, as you saw, sort of have alerted Vicky Doudara. That we may need her help getting consolidated communications to remove the double utility poles that are up and down that sidewalk. Which further means that the sidewalk is too narrow to be useful. And I think before we spend money on a sidewalk there, we'd want to get the utility pole issue cleared up.
Yep, and Mike shaking his head, yes, generally speaking, they'll they'll move a little bit quicker if we're doing a road construction project with sidewalks as well, then they they'll come in and. And move those poles and or put new ones in if we ask them that they need if they need to be moved according to our construction plans, especially. I saw Jeff saying Jeff Parker.
Clarification for Jeff Hamilton. When you said that realistically, a million dollars a year to catch up, is that? A million dollars a year for the next twenty years to get the entire cycle or just a million a year for five years?
It was somewhere between seven fifty and a million dollars a year just for. Normal maintenance. Just to keep the roads in a condition. Such that they are properly dim coated every few years and redone every, what, seven or ten, something like that?
Yeah, depending on depending on the traveled way, you know, seven to ten years. Yeah.
So that's that's ongoing for the system.
Yes.
Thank you.
And hopefully, eventually, we'll get to that point where we're budgeting the amount of money properly for for roads and we can. Don't have to worry about infrastructure bonds in the future. Other comments or questions? About public works or about any of the public works? Eric, were you waving away or were you had a question?
No, I'm good. Sorry.
So no other questions on public works at this point? Okay. So now next up is. The cemeteries, which is page two hundred and sixty. So the first item or line that I'll talk about here is the first line twenty two oh five, the assistant sexton stipend. So we have made a change. Mr. Farley had retired after many years serving in that position. And the new gentleman that we've that I've hired and appointed in that position. Is willing and able to do quite a bit more for us, one of those things. And I'll mention this because we have some money budgeted in a different line under supplies. If you at the. I'm gonna forget the name of the cemetery, Mike.
Seaview or? West Rockport?
Rockville, right?
Rockville Cemetery?
Oh, yes. Where we did the the road, the road work this past this past fall.
Rockville.
Yeah, Rockville. So for instance, in that cemetery, there's a fairly large section of the cemetery. In the rear where the public works crew actually. Reconstructed widened it and reconstructed a road back there on the on the left side, if you're facing it from facing the cemetery from the from the road from room seventeen. And while we were doing that. The assistant section was out there and basically it said. And we were talking about it too, is that it makes a lot of sense that a lot of those lots have not been sold. But it would make sense instead of having, part of the issue we had to. To build that road is that people were driving over graves, unfortunately. Because some of the trees and brush had grown in and not been cut back previously. So and plus, it wasn't wide enough for us to really have a road through there. So the thought that he had come up with was, wouldn't it make sense that while before we sell a lot of those lots, that we would mark those those off? And set pins in place so that we would have. Delineated grave sites and that we wouldn't run into a problem like this in the future. Now, obviously, in a lot of the cemeteries we have, we can't do that. As well as we could in this one because it's pretty much wide open and we can do that. So those are the types of things that he's willing to do for us that. Really will cost us quite a bit less money to have him do it than it would be for for us to do it. And it's certainly a valuable valuable option. If you look at line thirty six thirty, the mowing. Again, the contracts will be going out to bid later on this spring. So we've budgeted for for a five five percent increase. Hopefully, it's less than that. But at this point, we don't know. So we want to definitely cover our cover our bases on that one. Line forty three ten, the cemetery associations, the Seaview Cemetery Association is no longer. In existence. So there's actually four cemetery associations, not five now. So. We generally would give them five hundred dollars each year for the work that they do. So that will be reduced by five hundred. One note there, too, is that the Seaview Cemetery Association, when they disbanded, they donated their funds that they had remaining to the town. To be put towards a columbarium. Construction. And that was, I think, around thirteen thousand dollars that was donated. To the town and was put into that reserve account for that. So certainly a an excellent use of that of that funding. Line fifty four fifteen, general supplies. This is the type of thing that I was just talking about with the assistant sexton. So. This is for. This covers everything from flags for the for the markers, for the veterans' graves to updating the veterans' markers that may be there or adding some. But most importantly here, the increases for corner markers to plot out lots. In the in the cemetery. And then the next line to talk about would be line seventy five seventy seventy five seventy one, which is a reserve account for cemeteries. And this is where the columbarium funding would be placed. And so I have included twenty five thousand dollars in there. It was removed last year, and I know those of you that have been on budget committee in the select board before have had this discussion. I think this will get us to the point where we'll be able to to. Start construction of that during this next year. Which would be a great thing because then we could start selling some space within that. And have some revenue created as well. Mark, you had your hand up.
Yeah, thank you, Bill. I think with the the money from the association that brought it up to forty three thousand. In reserve, and I think it was originally mentioned that it would be around seventy to seventy five thousand. To get the columbarium up and going. And we had had conversation about. Perhaps some of the investment money, Bill. What did you ever find out about that? So that we wouldn't have to budget the twenty five thousand.
Yep, I haven't had. I haven't had the conversation lately with the investment committee. They haven't met other than lately. And they were focused on revising their bylaws and their investment policy. But that will be.
So there is a chance that we won't need to budget the twenty five thousand. We can. Get it from the other source.
Yeah, I think so. I need to have that conversation with them and they're gonna be meeting shortly. So. Because they we have the investment RFPs that have come in. So they'll be meeting and that'll be on the agenda. And I'm looking at Megan, even though she can't see me to say, yes, that's gonna be on the agenda.
No, that's that's for other people's information so that, you know, we may be able to not have to do that.
Right.
Yeah. They previously released some funds a couple of years ago, didn't they, Mark? One or two years ago?
I I believe, yes, I believe so.
That's my recollection.
And I and I think from previous conversations that they're that they're favorable towards that so that we could either. Eliminate this or reduce it. Based on that conversation. So I will be having that conversation coming up. Think that's basically the differences in the cemetery account. Are there other other questions? Comments? Okay. And I should have, I should have at the beginning recognized some of our new members on the budget committee too, and I was just seeing Hannah sitting there. And Greg was here. Yep, there he is. Sorry, Greg. Greg and Hannah are new this year to the budget committee. So welcome. And I know Hannah is joining us from, I believe, Seattle.
Just north of Seattle, yeah.
Normally, I would like to sit down with new members and ahead of time and just have a conversation around the budget, the process and all that sort of thing. But time has gotten short. But if the two of you would. Like to have that conversation, you certainly can send me an email. And we can probably set up a Zoom or something. If that makes sense.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
So next up is. The administration account, which is page ninety three. And Mike, I think we're all set with you. We've gone through your. Your budgets. We've got sanitation, but that I can handle that one easy enough. So the administration account. Line three thousand and five. Accounting and auditing services. This number is lower than what was in the budget for this year because we have a new contract. With a new auditing company. So that's been reduced. Slightly, but reduced anyway. Line three thirty sixty miscellaneous professional services, you'll see is increased ten thousand dollars. This is to cover the Rockport's share of the. EMS regionalization study. So. Where we are with that. During this past fiscal year, these last. Oh, six months or so, we've been working. When I say we, I should say the towns of Camden, Rockport, Lincolnville and Hope. Have been working with an EMS consultant, Kevin McGinnis. As well as Tom Judge from Lifeflight of Maine. Rick Senegal of. Oh, North Star Ambulance Service, which is up in the Farmington area. And then a EMS, National EMS Expert out in California that is associated with Kevin. And they've done a evaluation of. Our current. EMS services. And that's leading us to. Essentially have another year contract with probably a second year option with Northeast Mobile Health Services with some. Amendments to their contract around the performance standards. But the biggest addition to our EMS service will be the creation of a first responders program. And then also the continued study with a different. Um and then also the continued study uh with a different consultant. Uh around regionalization of the EMS service. The reason that we're we're choosing to go with Northeast again for the next year or two is so that we can. Um really determine what it will take for us and plan for a regionalization of the EMS. Service, whether it's uh through a Firebase service is what we're looking at um versus having a private contractor. And so um this ten thousand dollars would be our Rockport's share of that study going forward. Um to give us a much better idea of what it will take for us. Uh with details um to create a Firebase EMS regional service. And I'm just looking at other lines here, um under capital items, seventy four oh two, the fiber optics project. Also known as the broadband project. Um current year, we have seventy five hundred dollars budgeted. Budgeting twenty thousand dollars uh as part of. A much broader effort uh with multiple towns, uh and certainly, Deborah, if you want to speak on this, you certainly can. Um with the number of towns that are involved now. Probably would be better coming from you, Deborah, because I'll miss two or three of them.
Um yeah, I think that um uh many of you know that um Hope, Lincolnville, Camden. Rockport, obviously, Northport, um actually, South Thomaston, Rockland. Are all part of a coalition. Um hopefully, Thomaston is gonna be joining us, maybe Union, and. We are um working together toward, you know, potential, for example, regional utility district similar to what Calis and Baileyville did. Um this reflects what we're trying to pull together as much as we can reasonably. Uh toward the consulting that we need uh to do. You might recall that in the past, we had. We originally were gonna go with the vendor, it was gonna cost us about twenty thousand dollars, but they were not going for Camden or Rockport before the others joined us. But they weren't going to deliver a product that was near as extensive as what some other vendors can, but it costs more. Um to do that, however, with all the different towns involved, um you know, we're hoping that we can um pull together. Sufficient funds in this kind of category. Um it's a moving target. Um I hope that, you know, that this is gonna get us where we need to go. Camden and we had had. Had both agreed that we would quit, you know, propose twenty thousand apiece. I think Rockland is proposing about the same in their budget. Hopefully, Thomaston will be doing something similarly. Um we are also gonna uh look to some of the smaller towns to get some grant money, grant money that would not be. Um available to us as the larger, less underserved towns. And um we've also got some interest um recently. Um after a Camden Rotary thing that I did uh yesterday, I guess it was, we have some interest going for private investment too. So this is, of course, a fraction of what was discussed years ago toward consulting.
Thanks, Deborah. That's essentially it for the highlights in the administration government department, so questions or comments around this department? Uh Bob?
It was so on the fiber optics project, um every town that you mentioned, Deborah, must pony up money to be part of this?
Yeah, either through ponying up money, Bob, or through um applying for and receiving grants. But yes. There has, there's value coming in different ways, either through budgets or grants.
Right, and then uh Bill, I had a question on EMS, this EMS project. So you're talking about regionalizing EMS, which I support. Um so does that mean all of the towns are participating right now in this EMS um study? Okay, so and are we talking, what towns are we talking about?
The current, the current um evaluation that's been ongoing for the past several months is the four towns, Hope, Lincolnville, Rockport, Camden. Yeah, and there is going forward with an EMS regionalization study. It's not gonna be limited to just those four towns, so you know, we would be looking to other communities as well, such as Union, such as Warren, Thomaston. Um obviously, Rockland would be a partner within that as well. Um but it's really, I hate to say it's our problem, but it's the four towns' problem right now to try to solve. But for regionalization, we certainly would look outside of those four towns for solutions because it only makes sense to do that. Other comments or questions? Okay, so we will go on to the next budget, which is um. The Town Manager's Office Budget on page ninety eight. So the first line I'll um discuss here is under Employee Wage Adjustments, which doesn't have a line number. Uh this is something that was, if you, those of you that were on the Budget Committee last year recall, um that was added in. To um perform some wage adjustments after I completed a salary and and wage survey, which was done. Uh which is completed recently, uh and there were several positions, I want to say four or five positions that. Um received adjustments based on that's on that wage survey. So the fifteen thousand dollars in this year's budget covered those, and so we don't need that going forward. Because we built that into the budgets and the line items for the wages going forward. Line twenty five sixty, Employee Safety and Performance, that's reduced by a thousand dollars, uh not a huge number, but a twenty five percent drop. And that's essentials, essentially, we'll just use uh some funding from the Employee Safety Reserve. So the um our workers' compensation dividend. Goes into that reserve account so that we can, we're slowly building that up so that we can reduce what we need from uh the within the budget. For employee safety going forward, so where I can find little reductions, we're we're trying to do that. Down under Purchased and Contractual Services, under Travel Expense, thirty one oh five. Um that's going up to fifty five hundred. This is one of those lines that was reduced um in this past year because of the pandemic. So that covers travel, travel expenses for my training at various conferences um that I go to. Fingers crossed that we can get back to some sort of normalcy in in the fall, so I can attend some trainings. For those of you that don't know, um I am a certified municipal and county manager through the Main Town City County Management Association. And that uh gives the town, it's about a three percent break on our insurance costs for public officials liability. Um so it, to keep up those certifications, I have to have so many trainings. Actually, I have to have two hundred and. Two hundred and eighty hours over a three-year period in different categories. Helen, you had a question?
Yeah, uh I assume there's some money left over in some of these um. Categories based on the fact we've gone to Zoom meetings and stuff like that, and I will those be held over for the next year?
Yeah, this this is, this is one of those lines where I I don't, I generally don't like to hold money over and carry it forward for the next year. I'd rather go into unassigned fund balance, um and then we can utilize it. Um you know, to to reduce taxes the following year.
Well, that's what I was wondering is if it would go there. Do you have some idea overall? Uh the departments, how much that might be happening? Uh how much money that might be?
At this point, I don't have uh an idea. I mean, we're we're through, obviously, seven months. And there are some expenses that came up that we didn't and uh anticipate, such as the cleaning in the Public Works. Department, for instance, but I don't, I I haven't looked at that yet. I usually start looking at that in, you know, April or so.
It would be interesting to know the ballpark sometime before the town meeting.
Yes, yep.
Thank you.
Down under line forty four eighty, the newsletter, um this was a new item that was put in the budget this for this year. And one that was budgeted at ten thousand originally to have six different issues of the newsletter going out. Uh we reduced that uh as part of the pandemic cuts. Down to eight thousand, knowing that we wouldn't be able to get to six issues out, so we were able to get uh hopefully get five issues out, which is we're on, we're on task for. Um so this would get us back up with a ten thousand dollar budgeted amount, would get us back up to the six issues. Uh for the year. Uh Deborah?
Um can we go back up to legal fees for a second?
Sure.
Um so outside council fees that are not in our normal, um and not in the normal contract. It indicates we only haven't heard or four thousand, right? Four thousand this year outside the contract.
We're budgeting for four thousand outside, correct?
Right, um but. Uh I mean, this year with all the litigation with the um school district and hotel and. Et cetera, et cetera. I mean, I I can't believe that.
No, we've spent, so so the hotel appeal. That came, that comes out of the Planning Development Department under legal fees.
Okay.
Yep, and the school, uh the school assessment issue, we're um we're. Accounting for that in the general ledger, not out of an expense account because of the anticipated. Revenue offset. Yes, recovery, yes, that's a good, that's a good. So that's, that's where it's being accounted for.
That's, yeah, I just knew those numbers were too low that those were not included in there, so that's where we'll find it. Okay, and they and the contract amount, um I do recall um it going down at one point, so it went down and now. That's a number that uh they've given us um to include it, or is it just you're estimating that?
I'm I'm estimating it's, it, so we we've never, um it has not been decreased, because if you recall, Deborah, we haven't negotiated a new contract with them. We've just continued the existing contract.
Right.
So. Pre-pandemic, we were on a path where we were starting to talk about having a new agreement, um and it would have been lower. Now, edging our bets, um and going back up to what the what the contract amount was um from the from the previous year.
Okay, let's do it.
I mean, this at least covers the rate that we're paying now, whereas the thirty five thousand that's budgeted in the current year doesn't cover the rate that we're. That we're paying now, because we were going to be.
Right, okay, yep, gotcha. And you know, there was an analysis that was done at one point, remember, uh you it just keep that in mind uh of. Who gets the better part of that contract amount?
Yes. So I think we, I think, I think we probably have this past year.
I think that's probably right. Not sure it was right in the past, but I think it was, it's right for this year.
Yeah, yeah. And and the the town's attorney and I have, we we did discuss that. A few months ago, and we were planning on having another conversation about it. And things have just gone a little crazy still with the pandemic, so. Think that's essentially the highlights uh in there, on under the revenues on on page ninety nine. Uh there's a little bit of increase in the cable TV franchise fee of about three thousand dollars, nine nine percent. That's based on actual collections. If you look back in the previous years, we collected thirty six, thirty eight, thirty eight. Um it does fluctuate based on the number of people that subscribe to cable service, so. I think thirty five is a is a better number than thirty two to budget for, but I don't know if I want to go to the full thirty eight. Other, yeah, Jeff, Parker?
Yeah, Bill, with respect to the um uh cable franchise fee. We've, my understanding is we've been going without a contract with them for about. I'll be facetious, a hundred and fifty years, but since uh Cable Vision. Um bought and sold, yeah, are we still in that same position, and do you feel that we're in any jeopardy, or are they, are they been good at the. Following through, even though no contract?
We're on live stream and not on cable, so they can't cut us off, right? So that's a good thing. Um I hate cable companies. I think everybody probably hates cable companies. Um the way the the franchise agreement is written is that they continue on as they are until a new one takes its place. So, yes, we are still, I think we're in year one hundred and forty two of an expired contract. I did have discussions with um. I guess their charter now, right? I was gonna say spectrum. Maybe they're spectrum now.
Ch- charter slash spectrum, I think.
Right, so I did have conversations with the Government Relations uh representative probably six months ago. Um about potentially putting in a new contract in place. And that's where we stand. But I don't have any concerns. I mean, they're gonna still deliver what they deliver and be slow and. Terrible as far as I'm concerned. Bob?
Yeah, Bill, uh line four four five oh, it says contingency. Is that a broad contingency line that you can use for any department if they have an overrun?
It can be pretty mu, it is very broad, yes, it can be used pretty much for anything.
So, I mean, as an example, uh tongue in cheek, uh. Uh Mike has a engine that blows and he needs ten thousand dollars. You could choose to use that, right?
We could, yes, and I I don't, it would have to go to the Select Board, even though it's within my budget. I would go to the Select Board and have them approve the use of that for whatever that would be. It's also used for, I mean, for instance, if the if the newsletter printing goes over, um I use that just as an example, because it's the next line down. Um I budgeted for twelve-page newsletter per issue for um five issues for this year. I don't think we've hit twelve pages yet. We're, we've been at sixteen pages, I think, mostly, so we have some extra printing costs there. So I could use it for that as well, but that's just an example, but yes, it it is broad-based.
I think the concept of a newsletter every three months would make a lot of sense, but I'm just speaking at a cit, as a citizen.
Other comments or questions? Okay, I don't see any. Um next up is sanitation on page two hundred and ten. So um really, the only line I'm gonna touch on here is the MCSW C, which is Midco Solid Waste Corporation Assessment, line forty three fifteen. Uh there is a slight decrease there for this year. I want to highlight that for a couple of reasons. Um our our two representatives. From the Select Board are Denise and Deborah that serve on that Corporations Board of Directors, and there's been. Huge amounts of work that have been put into that corporation over the last year, uh year plus. I serve on the Finance Committee for that uh corporation as well, and for those of you that haven't met the um new manager, new solid waste manager. Um he's fantastic. He knows what he's doing uh from a fin, from a finance committee perspective. Uh he came to us with a budget that was. Very detailed, very well thought out, uh very well explained. And to see a decrease is always a good thing. So.
Yeah, he came to us, um he was a supervisor at the Dragon Plant, and um he not only knows how to. Budget and supervise people, he dealt with EPA from the dragon perspective. I mean, he was, he was a great find for us.
There's one great story about the signboard when you drive into the transfer station now, the sort of electronic signboard. And you could look at that and say, oh my gosh, what are they spending money on for that for? Apparently, that's a scavenged TV and a scavenged computer, and Mike just put it all together into that signboard for us, so.
Yeah, when something needs to be fixed, sometimes he just rolls up his sleeves and goes out and does it. I mean, he's a very handy creator guy besides.
Yeah, no, I I've I've been very um very happy working with him as well, so. Any questions around anything that's in this budget? Okay, I don't see any. Um up next, we have um the county tax. Blame this all on Bob Duke.
Uh what page?
I'm sorry, um page two fifty four. So your budget document um is incorrect, as I mentioned in the introduction, so. Um Megan, I believe you've updated this number on the. um, Megan, I believe you've updated this number on the sheet that's on the screen.
Yes.
So we mistakenly had put in the same number as last year, uh, when I was reviewing this earlier today. And so there is an increase in the county tax, um, it's not one million fifty-one thousand eight forty, it's uh, one million one hundred thousand nine hundred and twenty-four, which is up four point six percent. But the dispatch fees um for nine-one-one and for uh county dispatch as well are ones down, ones up a little bit, so essentially it's, there's a little bit of a negative uh decrease there uh when it comes to those. Um, one of the bigger factors that factors into our slight increase in the county taxes are proposed state valuation. Uh, if you looked at the backup information for that, our state valuation is proposed to go from nine hundred and sixty-six million, four hundred and fifty thousand to one billion thirteen million, two hundred thousand, so just our share of uh, you know, of a small increase. Um, we'll, we'll raise that up as well, cause the county budget, really, they, they did fairly well, I think, uh, in keeping it very reasonable. Uh, if you, if you look at that um county taxes and dispatch fees, the combination between the two is increasing from nine point seven three million to nine point eight nine million um overall, so I think that they, they did a fairly decent job there. Bob, I don't know if you want to comment on that?
Yeah, the only comment I'd make is that, um, and, and I've been at it a lot, well, you, how we I've been there since you were county administrator, Bill.
Yes, you, you were.
How long, but we, 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 we've ridden, we've ridden past a, a number of years like Rockport's going through right now, where you have some large capital needs, and even though we are uh like our jail as an example, which is um which was built in, oh gosh, I want to say the uh late seventies, early eighties, but anyway, we're, we're ha- we're going through a number of infrastructure uh improvements there, uh, but we're doing it on the cheap over a number of years, uh, so the good news is for the county in the long run, um you should see a fairly flat tax there for a number of years. We don't see anything big coming up. I mean, other than wages, um, and, and policing the islands are a challenge, but um, we've got, we, we really have a great, uh, great staff, so, you know, a lot like what, where we are in Rockport too, so.
And, and I certainly appreciate um appreciate the staff at the county level, um, they're always, they're always receptive and responsive, and it's always good to see two of my hires still there.
Yes, yeah.
Any, any questions around the county tax um or dispatch fees, any of that? Mark, was that a question or? Sorry. Page two sixty-six of the schools, we don't need to spend a lot of time on this simply because these are estimated numbers. Basically, we've just put in a four percent uh increase there, uh, so we don't have these numbers back yet. I will say that um the school superintendent's office did contact me today by email and they're um want to meet with the select board, a superintendent will meet with the select board to review the budget uh coming up, so we'll get that scheduled when we can. Deborah?
Yeah, I, I, I didn't, but you should know that I, I was going to put my hand up, um. How are we gonna ensure that uh that we're charged the appropriate portions here?
Um, the great thing about this uh over assessment issue with the schools is that the work that was done by the consultant to determine what the actual amounts are supposed to have been over the last X number of years um, really spells it out very, very well, how that formula is supposed to apply. So Carrie uh and Megan uh and myself really understand the formula a thousand times better than we did.
Good, and, and I think even in this um, this last one uh for the current year, when we caught that there was a large over assessment, um, even this uh, the school had reass- reassessed or recalculated and come up with an appro- uh, with what turned out to be according to the um consultant, the appropriate number, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so anyway, but it's good to know, now I feel more confident that if you guys are uh able to follow that, that's great.
Well, and that's the first thing that, I mean, Carrie and Megan and I, you know, when we see the school number, we'll be like, okay, let's dig into this. And see, and, and calculate it and see if we can figure out exactly how they got that number. Denise, you had a question?
Yeah, I just, I, I couldn't quite see the amount that we got credited back to us when they discovered the error for the twenty-twenty budget, was that the?
It was caught in time, wasn't it?
It was caught before, right, yeah.
But when you look at like sort of just what our budgeted amount for MSAD twenty-eight, I didn't see a huge decrease. I don't know if you see that in the year-to-date, where do you see the four hundred?
You wouldn't, you wouldn't see it because we caught it before, so their assessment, for example, would have been seven point nine million instead of seven point five.
To seven point nine, if nineteen fiscal year nineteen twenty was seven point two eight five, and then it would, they were gonna raise it up by over ten percent, okay?
Yeah. Um, I think Greg had his hand up.
Yes, so I was wondering if, if we were getting compensated for back years that they were uh over assessing us.
Deborah or Denise, do you want to answer that question?
Yeah, well, we have, we have a litigation um pending against the school district in Camden uh for that reason, and um there's quite a bit um of potential uh money involved in that, but that litigation is pending and we're in the process of, you know, per confidential protected settlement negotiations, so.
Well, Greg, none of that's reflected in the budget.
Sorry.
Thank you.
What would you say, Jeff?
Said, none of that activity is reflected in this budget.
Yeah, yeah, no, because we're in settlement negotiations, so we uh, we, you know, it's unclear how much we'll recover.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. And as soon as we have the school numbers, you know, we certainly will plug them in and we'll let the budget committee know uh what they are after we've gone through them with a fine-tooth comb and done our calculations ourselves and argued with them, if we have to, which hopefully we won't have to, but um, insurance is on page one hundred and thirty-six. So line thirty-seven twenty, property and casualty insurance, um, you see a seven and a half percent increase. This includes a three percent increase in rates, and we're just assuming we don't we, we budgeted three percent increase in the rates, cause we don't know what those numbers are yet at this point. Uh, but this also includes um the increase to add uh the library, the new library onto the property insurance. Uh, so that's why you see a seven and a half percent increase versus a three, uh, three percent increase. Um, the nice thing about MMA's property and casualty insurance is that um, when it was, when the library was added on to our insurance policy after it was completed, once it was out of the builder's insurance, um MMA essentially waives the increase in the premium for that rest of that um fiscal year, so that we don't see it within that fiscal year, uh, but then we do see the increase in the next fiscal year. Uh, and the three percent increase carries on to the others as well, the public officials liability, the vehicle insurance. Um, again, that's what we're budgeting, we don't have the numbers from them at this point yet. Questions or comments around the insurance? Eric?
Yeah, just one quick question, is that insurance deductible? Is that an aggregate or per instance thing?
Um, the insurance deductible, it depends on the category, so would be, it would be a per instance. We generally don't have claims, but we do budget a little bit for insurance deductible, and each category has a different deductible, I believe. Vehicles, you know, vehicles has a different deductible than, you know, building insurance.
Right, okay.
And that's another one of those areas where contingency might have to come into play if we had a, a year where we had more than, you know, one, one or two claims, then um, then we would have to dip into contingency. Other questions around insurance? Okay. Um, so that was the last one for us to review tonight. Um, looking forward, we do have uh, the next meeting is scheduled for next Tuesday, the twenty-third, uh, beginning at five-thirty again. Uh, and then the following uh Tuesday, March second, would be another uh workshop for us to continue the review and discussion. Um, and then we'll um start the real discussions probably uh after that, um, where we can start um looking forward to trimming down the budget. You will probably be getting additional information and updates from us as we um, as we move forward uh, in the budget, as I've said for numerous times, if there's, if the school numbers come in, we'll get those to you, or when the school numbers come in, we'll get those to you. Uh, if we had the exact insurance increase, we'll get those to you. And, and we'll go from there, but uh Megan has highlighted on the screen what's, what we're looking at uh, on Tuesday, uh, starting off with general assistance, going through the different apartments, um. The big night would be on March second, or one of the big nights, I guess, is on March second, when we basically handle all of the uh police, fire, EMA, uh, West Rockport Fire Station and that, that type of thing. Helen?
Yeah, um, I've had a really bad day. I assume this uh schedule is in some email that uh Megan sent to our town email account. Cause I didn't see it. I know she's duplicated our personal and our town accounts, but I didn't, didn't see this one.
I can send it out tonight after the meeting, so it's all the top of your email.
Yeah, it's just been a really bad day for me in terms of checking.
Well, do you mean the detailed one here, or do you mean the?
I mean, what's on the screen right now, I, I.
Yeah, I didn't remember seeing that. I, I was looking at that in my materials, and I didn't see it either, so that's always helpful to have.
Yeah.
Megan will send that out.
That replacement pages for the errors that you've mentioned, I've taken some notes and
Yeah.
You're gonna handle, okay.
Yeah, we can, unfortunately, we'll be, I mean, we won't be handing them necessarily, but.
Megan does not have to hand deliver those, but.
We can email them, we can email them to you, so you have those, absolutely.
Yeah.
Other, Bill? Yes, Mark?
Um, question. In, in the budget that you presented, you said that uh there were a great deal of the capital improvement items included in this budget. If they all were accepted and completed, where does that leave us with the capital improvement list as we now know it?
We can certainly send out the plan, so you can see that, uh, you've got.
I'm just saying, would, would we be fifty percent complete of the plan or a hundred percent?
No, we wouldn't be a hundred percent. Yeah, I, I can't, I can't put a percent on it, really, Mark, I mean, for, for instance, if you look at at the, at the road construction and paving alone, I mean, that's we should be, as been, has been noted tonight, you know, we'll say eight hundred thousand dollars, and we're budgeting at four fifty, um, you know, so that, that alone.
And my other question is, uh, the, the current budget is seven hundred and thirty-seven, four thirty-one over, not counting the three hundred used from UFB, is that right?
You're looking at expenses versus?
Yeah, the bottom line is, is, what again, run those numbers by me?
Yeah, so we're, we're at about seven hundred thousand dollars for expenses
Okay.
over the current year.
Yeah.
Revenues using the three hundred thousand dollars from fund balance is four hundred and fifteen thousand more. So we're at about two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars of a, of a net increase.
What, what, okay, sorry.
So the, the increase in property taxes, the, the dollar amount increase in property taxes would be two hundred and eighty-five thousand roughly.
What, what is one percent of the U, U, I'll try to be better, what is one percent of the UAV? After we use the three hundred thousand? I'm just doing some math. No, that's fine. I mean, where I'm going, a lot of this stuff needs to be done, I mean, the capital improvement stuff, and I mean, I I'm as snug as, as the next person when it comes to spending, but if I thought that getting everything in here done by including one more percent of the UAV would take care of this year's budget, my question then snaps to next year. Theoretically, if we're taking care of a lot of the capital improvement projects, next year shouldn't be as hefty a lift, if that makes any sense to anybody other than me.
Yep, I understand what you're saying.
I mean, I, I'm just trying, stuff needs to be done, it's been put off, and we're trying to do, you know, but one of the things that we need to do in the next year or two, if we need to convince the public that we need a new fire station, that they need to vote for it, is we, we need to be as fiscally cautious as we can and still get things done. So it's a hard pill to swallow this year and next year, so.
And, and one percent of the, of the unassigned fund balance is only about thirty-five thousand.
Okay.
So it's not a big, not a big number, one percent is not a big number.
All right.
But there are other, you know, there are other revenues, within that four hundred and fifteen thousand dollar increase in revenues is a hundred thousand dollars in excise tax that I'm estimating, a hundred thousand dollars more than what we've got in the current year.
Yeah, thank you.
In the town clerk's budget, so, I mean, we don't, our revenues really are driven by those two large areas, what the use of undesigned fund balance and our excise tax collections. Other comments or questions?
Yeah, Bill?
Yep.
I'm sorry, somebody else had a question.
That's okay, you go ahead, Bob.
Um, sorry, cause I wasn't here last year. What, what was, what was the town's, uh, what, what was your budget over the prior year last year?
Megan, do you have, do you have that number, or a percent? You were looking for a number or a percentage?
Percentage. I mean, I, I, I looked at, you gave me, you guys gave me a book from last year's budget review, and I looked it over and, and that, that that budget was proposed at seven percent increase last year, and I'm sure there was some cuts that were made. But um, we're still looking at it the same kind of number, we're looking at going in at seven percent, and I mean, every budget, um, every administrator and every budget committee acts differently. And, you know, some go for the gusto and go for a eight or ten percent increase and expect that it's gonna get cut. And some go in low, and so I guess my question is, is this, is this, is this the annual event? That it's always gonna be seven or eight percent, and we're gonna settle at four or five? That's my question, where were we last year? Where were we the year before?
Well, nine seventy-one, there we go, yeah.
Can I just add, can I just add something there, though, Bob, just, just for a little background? Um, uh, Bill, because he was new last year, he said, what do you guys want me to do? Do you want me to come in with an LD-one budget? Or do you want me to come in with what I really think, you know, ought to be done, or? Um, and so we told him to give us what he considers to be a write-on, what ought to be done budget. So that's what he did, and he knowingly did that because that's what we asked him to do, and then we cut it back. But at least we took the position that we'd like to know what his thinking is um in terms of what he'd like to see done. And then I think that's really what he did again this year. He didn't try to come in at an LD-one budget, but he came in with, you know, what he thought was, should be done, not knowing, you know, that that's probably not what is gonna result.
Right, thanks.
Yeah, no, Bob, and I think I'm just echo what Deborah said, that's exactly what happened last year, being my, being my first budget for Rockport. I came in with what I thought should, was needed for the town, and I did the same, took the same approach this year, especially. Uh, after the capital improvement committee went through and identified those projects and said, yeah, we really need to be. Saving for these. Now, the capital improvement committee does it kind of in a vacuum, obviously, because they're not looking at. All of the numbers put together in the operating budget. But as we all know, in any budget, I mean, wh- where's the? Hate to say easiest place, but that's the easiest place to, to look for reductions is within the capital budget. And, you know, are there, as I said, are there things that we can reduce there? Probably we can. Are we going to? Pay extra for them in the future years? Maybe, probably. It all depends on what the appetite is, you know, for the budget committee and the select board for this next year's budget.
Yep. I mean, the select board are gonna generally, I mean, this is what usually happens. The select board generally supports the administrator's budget because. You guys live it and breathe it all the time, where the budget committee, we just meet several times in the spring and that's it. So anyway, I'll, I'll get off my soapbox, I'll let you guys go home.
Any, anything else from anybody?
Did you want to show, a- a- answer Bob, Bob's?
Oh, yeah.
About where we came in?
Megan, I don't have percentages in front of me there on that summary, but I mean, there's the summary there, which is in the front of your book too, Bob, under the budget summary.
Well, last year's budget with the COVID adjustments that were made, it was a seven point, a three point seven, three increase over the prior year.
And that's the net?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's the municipal part of it.
Right, yeah, that's, that's what we were looking for, really.
Over seven, and we, and, and it was, and it came in at three point seven, three.
So that was as a result of having department heads make some cuts in, in their own, their departments.
When, when the pandemic hit, so that's, that's the final number, so after the pandemic, I think it wasn't, um. I want to see that, say, the net decrease from the originally approved budget was only about another s- like seventy-two thousand dollars more than that. So it wasn't substantially higher. Might have been a real, around four percent or something like that. It was settled on before the pandemic cuts. Then we cut revenue and expenditures.
Was five point six, five.
So it went from five. Thanks, to three point seven, okay. Does that answer your question, Bob? And anybody else?
No, thank you for all the hard work you have put into this document.
The thank goes to the department heads and to Megan, because.
Yeah, thanks, you guys.
The hard work on this, so. And any errors, any errors, I'll take the blame for. Okay, great, guys, well, we'll um, we'll see you uh, next Tuesday at five thirty then, and in the meantime, if you have questions, feel free to send me an email. I, I'll try to answer them or get back to you as quick as I can.
Great, thanks a lot, Doug.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night.